Special Town Meeting to order. First order of business is nomination for the moderator. Review, well, I need, sorry, I need a.
I'll nominate Lorraine Faraday.
Second.
I mean, you need to vote by secret ballot.
Oh.
Secret John.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Maggie.
Great, Lorraine, you want to be moderator? Well, I guess I'd say you're listed.
Really a question.
We swear on this Constitution of the United States and of this state, so long as I shall continue with innocence and marrow and solemnity, God. I, Lorraine Faraday, do swear that I will faithfully discharge to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent on me as moderator of the special town meeting, according to the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state domain and the charter and ordinances of Damascata, so help me God.
Lorraine, yours.
You want to do the Scouts first?
Well, we can, yeah, I believe we have some special guests here tonight that are going to lead us in the pledge allegiance, if you don't mind. We have Scout Troop 213. We'll introduce them a little more formally at the, at the regular meeting, so, you gentlemen, so. You let us know when you're ready.
Yeah.
My pledge is to the United States, to the republic, to the citizens, to one nation, united in its soul, with the Constitution of all.
Thank you. All right. It's all yours, Lorraine.
Okay. For the members of the Scouts, this is a special town meeting, which is just a little bit before the board meeting. And we have those occasionally for various reasons, particularly when we're talking about changing the ordinance, like, you know, and I, for when spending money, want to spend money outside of their already budgeted money, so.
Sounds great.
Okay, Article One, we chose an operator. This.
Okay. Article Two, we're going to vote on these one at a time, and for the scouts, the people who, voters who were over the residence of Damascata who signed in, get a green card to vote with, so. Article Two, shall the town vote to enact the amended land use ordinance as presented to the select board on February first, two thousand twenty-three? These amendments are being recommended as non-substantive and to clarify errors or discrepancies in the ordinance that may be in conflict with other ordinances or policies. A certified copy of the amended ordinance is available at the town's website or at the town office at twenty-one School Street, Damascata. So I need motion on Article Two?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor of Article Two? Any opposed? Article Two carries. Article Three, shall the town vote to enact the amended site plan review ordinance as presented to the select board on February first, two thousand twenty-three? These amendments, again, are being recommended as non-substantive and to clarify errors or discrepancies in the ordinance that may be in conflict with other ordinances or policies. A certified copy of the amended ordinance is available on the town's website or at the town office. Motion on Article Three?
And make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All right. Any discussion as to Article Three? Hearing none. All those in favor of Article Three? Any opposed? Article Three carries. Article Four, shall the town vote to enact the amended subdivision ordinance as presented to the select board on February first, two thousand twenty-three? Again, non-substantive and clarifying errors or discrepancies. You have a motion on Article Four?
Article Four.
Second.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. Any discussion? Right, hearing none, all in favor of Article Four? Opposed? Right, motion carries. Article Five, shall the town, one, transfer its ownership of the sewer lines located at the municipal parking lot to the Great Salt Bay Military District, or to as the district, as said lines more precisely described, described in the transfer agreement, and two, grant the district an easement that allows for use of the municipal parking lot in the area of the sewer lines to construct, install, maintain, repair, alter, and replace the lines, with the rights of both parties being more fully described in the sewer easement deed, and three, authorize the select board to take any and all actions necessary to finalize the documents needed to complete this transfer of ownership and conveyance of an easement. A copy of the agreement regarding the transfer of ownership of sewer lines in the municipal parking lot, referred to above as the transfer agreement, and the sewer easement deed is available on the town website and at the town office. Motion as to Article Five.
Article Five, second.
Okay. Any discussion on Article Five? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Article Five. Out. Very sorry, long day. All right. Motion to adjourn the special meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn special town meeting.
Second.
Any opposed? All right, you're back in your regular session. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Lorraine.
You're very welcome.
I can pay less, though.
Yeah.
Oh, that was up. Just a second here.
So we get fined if we don't give it?
Okay. Ready? All right, with that, thank you, everybody. We will open the February fifteenth Damascata Select Board meeting to order. Before we get started on some official items, we do have some, introduced earlier, we have some, some special guests in the audience here that I had a pleasure of a few weeks ago, asking some very, very fun questions and we had a good, we had a good time, so I'd love to have them, you know, I don't know how you guys want to, if you want to come up and introduce yourselves, scout leaders first, or if you gentlemen want to introduce yourselves, so.
Sure, my name's John Roberts and with this, I'm here with a Scout Troop two thirteen. Our scout master is Mike Lomas and John Siders and and myself are assisting him with, trying to have these guys on a, on a good path, so. Why we're here tonight is we're here for the citizenship and the community merit badge, so one of the requirements is to come to a municipal, municipal meeting, and the second part of the requirement is that there should be some debate at the meeting, and they are to write down which side they agree with and explain it, so if there's nothing contentious, if you guys could at least make up one thing, so they can find, have something to cover for their merit badge, that would be great. But I will ask that the scouts stand up and just say their name, please?
Yeah, that would be great.
Yes.
Well, I just been and I'm thirteen years old. Eddie Siders.
I am Alakai Donaldson and I am a scout.
I'm Matthew Rollins and I'm a total visual.
I'm Liam Boffler and I'm a scout.
Awesome, yeah, well, we're happy to have you here. It's nice to have a, have an audience, so. We'll try to cut something contentious for you, so, yeah, we'll get through some of the boring stuff first, so. All right, so we do have some housekeeping, I think everybody's seen the minutes of February first.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of February first.
Thank you, Josh, we're here second.
Second.
Lou seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? Move the minutes. So financial reports, we're going to table the, sorry, accounts payable thirty, thirty-seven, right, which accounts payable?
Forty.
Forty, I'm sorry, I had the wrong number. Let's do the payroll warrants. We have two payroll warrants at thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Move payroll warrants thirty-eight and thirty-nine.
Thank you, Josh.
Second.
Lou, your second?
Yep.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. I mentioned before, yeah, accounts payable forty, there's an item further on down the agenda that we have to square away first, but we can move that, so we'll come back, so don't let me forget. All right, we can move down the line to citizen comments and general correspondence, any, anything come in on the mail or anything? We have anybody in the, I think you see a gentleman in the back of the room there, he's going to come on up? Familiar face? How you doing, Anton? You know the drill, you introduce yourself and, yeah.
Anton, thirty-five Schooner Street, Damascata. And I'm co-chair of the Public Safety and Accessibility Collaborative. I didn't realize I was going to have this wonderful audience here today. I appreciate it. I'd like to take a couple minutes, I know you have a very busy meeting tonight, but we're looking to add a few people to the collaborative, the volunteers, and I'm speaking to you as the leaders of the community and with the possibility that people once in a while say something to you about the kinds of things that we work on. So a little background, the collaborative itself came about as a kind of a result of the work done on Bristol Road, the sidewalk on Bristol Road, we were heavily involved in that, so it was four years ago, so we've been in existence about four years. And it, it's difficult to maintain a, a, a large, not a large, but a substantial group of individuals that on a volunteer basis, and we're, we're seeking some new, new individuals that could have, perhaps help us, and that's the reason we're here in front of you. It is a grassroots organization, nobody appoints us, nobody gives us a yes or a no, that sort of thing, and, and so we seek participation from in the, in the community, and a couple of things that I really want to focus on is, is beyond the pedestrians and the cyclists and the safety issues that we've tried to support. We really have built on the shoulders of a lot that has happened prior to this point, and I refer specifically only kind of in reference up to the two thousand and eight Bike Ped Plan, which we use as a reference point a lot. The Heart and Soul Plan, which we spoke about at the celebration several years ago and continue to refer to it. The Comprehensive Plan, which has come up just recently in several ways relative to the building on Piper Mill Road, is, is a very, very important document, and we know there's another one coming. And we have two people from our collaborative that are on that Comprehensive Plan Committee. We're very much interested in the MDOT Complete Streets document as a basis for the work that we do as, as well, which was revised in two thousand and nineteen. And then, and there was another bike plan actually done in two thousand and fifteen, which was, was, I think, a masterful piece of work. And finally, in two, two thousand and twenty-one, we did a bike study that has had an impact on our thinking, and I think it's something that the town, that for those interested in it have been really very supportive of it. Couple of accomplishments that we've had, I think, are in line. I'm really proud of the relationship that we've had with the select board, with the town manager, with the police, and, and planning, and I think we've worked very cooperatively, very collaboratively, that's the purpose behind the organization. We've had some success with places like Church Street and the big project of Church Street and Mile Street. There's a, there is a measured mile that we helped to make popular here in in Damascata, which runs right here by the town office and goes over Hodgston and so forth. And I could reference a few more, and we've had other ideas that have not flown either, so I'm, I understand that, and some of them are a little costly and we are aware of that, but we've tried to go into a place where some, some of the funding can be matched, or we can go outside and, and make it a, a, a bigger project, a, a better funding for the project. So we're, we're very excited about what we have accomplished. I'm very interested in a suggestion that came from the Andy some time ago, and we're actually working on, which is a handicap dock somewhere either in Damascata or maybe a, 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 you know, a bordering community and, and trying to get fund for that so that it would be it'd really be unique in this area, and that's, that's very consistent with our message of, of, of trying to make the community accessible. So with all of that kind of background, we're looking for some people to join us, and we meet once a month typically, typically by Zoom. It's a meeting that's typically held on a Thursday afternoon from three thirty to five. I just offer those details because people will say, well, you know, when does this happen? Sometimes there are assignments that people take away between meetings, and the one other thing I would add is that I'm, I'm pretty excited about this one, actually, is that as a result of a conversation with Andy a few weeks ago, I've contacted the manager, town manager in Newcastle, say if, see if there aren't some ways that we might be able to connect between the two towns. Exactly how we would do it, I don't know, but we can make it up as we go, if in fact there, there is that opportunity, so thank you for that. Nothing's happening yet, but I put, I put it out there. So if you hear, as the leaders of the town, if you hear somebody comes, somebody comes to you, get somebody in your family that's interested in, in this kind of endeavor, it's all volunteers, and we need some volunteers, and I thank you for your, for your time. But the one thing I, I thought about as we I want you to each have one of the maps that we're really proud of and that's of the community, and you'll see inside in one of the logos, the town actually made a contribution to that a couple of years ago.
Oh, I don't have.
If you haven't had, don't have one? It's here.
You lived it with like.
Thanks.
Yeah.
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 Thank you.
And it's a second edition.
Do you have one you pass amongst the scouts so they can see?
Here, we have some in the hallway, too, if you need more. Thank you. Nice.
They don't do any good sitting in our.
Anton.
Thank you.
Anton, thank you, I, I, um, who, how might people reach out, who might they want to reach out to if they're interested in joining?
Excellent. What I would suggest is if people contact the town.
Mike there, and sorry, yeah, just so you make sure you're.
People contact the town office, I would hope that they would then let you know, and you, you have my email address, and we'll just follow up with them. I mean, I think, you know, I hope it would be a limited number and wouldn't be any, anything enormous, but that would be most convenient. I meant to ask you about that before I suggested this. Thank you, so just submit the names to the town office, and we'll get them to Andy and, and you'll get them to me, okay?
Anton, roughly, how, how many do you have in your group right now?
We have, we have ten, about ten active people, but it's, you know, with volunteer boards, you know, it's, if we have five or six sometimes, and sometimes it's all, all ten, but I, I, one other thing I would add is we are looking for some I I one other thing I would add is we are looking for some younger people. Please don't take that the wrong way. But you know, it would be nice to have a a different voice than
Yep.
I'll start.
Thank you. If we we hear anybody, we'll send them away. But I I'd like to speak for the board, but um, we we appreciate you've been a great group to work with and um, keep us informed and and you know, that that partnership's important. So thank you for coming in and and with regular updates. So.
Thank you.
All right. Don't see anybody on Zoom. Nobody else in the audience? Oh, yeah, we have one more. Come on up. I want to remind you. Come on, yeah.
Which hat are you wearing this? I don't know what's going on.
Uh, I'm just a citizen. Uh, there's a group of us.
Who are you, though?
John Roberts again. Sixty seven Chairman of Wayne.
He's a citizen.
There's a a group of us because this year coming up, if if you're not aware, is the hundred and seventy five year anniversary of the incorporation of Damascotta. So uh, a hundred at a hundred and fifty, which was a sesquennial, and I don't have my phone. There is a term for a hundred and seventy five. It's even longer than sesquennial. Um, so uh, there's a, there's a small group of us that are gonna get together to uh discuss uh, what sort of celebration we might want to try to put together in line with what the sesquennial was twenty five years ago. So we're gonna have a kickoff meeting next Wednesday, the twenty second at six thirty at the fire station. So if you know anyone that, you know, is into the history stuff, and uh, so some of the things that were done is they uh there was a walking tour put up of all the buildings in town that were existed before the town was incorporated.
Oh, yeah.
And there was twenty something buildings, which all are still there now. Um, uh, so some aspect of that, uh, maybe a parade, those types of things. But um, we'll uh, we'll be in touch. Um, I'm not expecting any real financial obligation from the town, but uh um, some support and and whatnot would be good as we progress down uh uh, this celebration. So.
That one seventy five sneaks up on you, doesn't it?
Yeah.
The word is demi semi septentennial.
The scouts are writing that down, right? Oh, thank you for that. Yep. So. Yeah. All right. Well, we'll move along here. Um, town manager, you have some uh some items to go through, maybe some capital updates, project updates?
Sure. Uh, keep some of them a little brief. Um, with Egypt and Belvedere, just uh update on that, that uh, so far, we've uh spent a hundred and forty, just over a hundred and forty thousand dollars, mostly on Egypt, all on Egypt Road. Um the uh Hagar is gonna transition. Uh, they're gonna let the road kind of dry out and do its frosty movement and all of that. But they're gonna shift over to Mile Street next.
Yep.
And hopefully by March first to start working on that. Um, the engineers are uh waiting, I think, got today, I believe, the revised or updated or amended uh bid numbers uh for that project because we expanded out now phase two. Um, and so they're looking at that. There were a couple changes to pipe sizes and valves on the water line, on the water side of the work for phase one. Um, so we need to get that from the engineers and um, sit and look at what that looks like and make sure we can still move forward if we gotta look to modify that. Um, so hopefully there's more on that next week. Um Hodgson Street, uh, the expectation from uh the engineers um in the folks with the state um are to have that out to bid by the end of this month.
For Hodgson?
Uh, yes, that lower section going to Pleasant Street.
Are we gonna keep, are we gonna try to do it one way?
Uh, it's gonna be maintain, uh, continue as a two-way road, but what they're gonna do is something a little bit different with the line striping. They're gonna, they are gonna put some lines down. Um, and my understanding is they're gonna widen it out a couple of feet um, and paint some white dashed lines up over that, well, at least across the section they're working on. Um, and that'll allow for primarily cars to go down between the lines and then leave room for pedestrians on the um outside of the dash lines. But if two cars are coming, there's room for the two cars to split. So this is an idea that uh had been implemented in, I believe Camden was an example. Um, and they thought the town thought they would try it there. On Hodgson Street, so.
And are we having open ditching there or closed?
Uh, that section of it will be closed. Yep. So it'll be a few extra catch basins installed and all the piping will be running between them.
Such a mess.
I take that back. There's, I think there is one section just above Blue Haven. That's gonna be kind of like an open open kind of basin area with some rocks. And so it'll catch some of that water coming down the hill and then it'll feed into the pipe.
There's so much on both sides.
It's a rough spot through there.
It is.
So we're looking at is the end of the month. That's what I'm being told. It was supposed to be January. There were some staffing issue uh challenges uh uh at the company, so they they had delayed, but um, I think it's important to acknowledge that it's only gonna go just above Blue Haven's Upper Drive. Um, this isn't gonna go up to the cemetery or over the hill. Um, so that's gonna have to be something that we're planning. Um, and I'm planning on carrying a number for next year in the budget for for planning that that phase. Um, so we can get moving on on that. And with any luck, maybe we can wrap it into the Church Street project while the equipment's right there.
Because the upper part needs work, too, with all that.
The rest of it really needs extra work.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. So the what why we're doing this section was because there was some funding that we were able to get to improve drainage. And that's been the emphasis on that lower section. There's, you know, what kind of a mess that is down there in the winter time. So.
Yeah. It's awful. That'd be nice to get that moving along. So.
Uh, the parking lot, um that we had hoped, we submitted the revised uh preliminary engineering report last week uh to E D A. Um, they managed to schedule a committee meeting, I think, for the next day. Um, but it wasn't going to include our updated P E R. Um, kept asking them Wednesday, when when in February are they doing it? They haven't scheduled it yet. Happened. So we didn't get on that one. Um, we've asked for a meeting with um, so they they kind of contract out staff. And so we're working with that person directly. And so we've asked to meet with the next person ahead of the next committee meeting. So uh, we can try and relay to them directly who will be, they'll be sitting in the meeting to try and, you know, get ahead of any questions they might have for March. Um so.
Another month.
You you copy and pasted that line in there, didn't you?
It's the same as last time. Yep.
So we are working on it and submitted it. It's just, you know, we gotta
You know, very, very slow wheels, you know, sometimes.
I provided uh just a printout of uh something that was presented at our last Mid Coast Managers Meeting from MMA's staff, uh, the legislative um, kind of platform, if you will, that MMA is advocating for on behalf of towns. They've seen some of the bills that have been put in as starter bills. Um, and and try to provide some context on on some of those items there. Um, if any of those jump out at you in in favor of uh supportive or or not supportive, um, and it's something the town wanted to submit testimony on, just um, should just give me a heads up. Um, they've been scheduling uh work sessions for some of these. Um, some of them still haven't been numbered yet. Uh, my understanding is they've got more bills this year already in the first session. They usually get in two sessions.
There's a lot of bills there. Yeah.
A lot going on in Augusta and a lot to try and keep track of. And that's where MMA is helpful in trying to at least pull out the ones that are specifically impacting municipalities. Some of them, you know, might not directly impact what we do. Um so that's what's nice with that organization. At least they can help us focus on what we need to look at.
That's, is that it?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. Yeah, thank you, Andy. Um, yeah, we can move on to official action items. Um, I've got a little bit of a list here, but pretty straightforward, I think, for the most part. Uh, let me get in my All right, we want to start out with um a kind of a bit of a combination one there, don't we? Yeah.
Yeah, it's a few steps.
A bit of a few steps on this one. So, yep. Um should we have a a a maybe have the fire chief brief us a little bit?
Yeah, if you want, we can kind of do a, or I think Fred was gonna brief Ford on the truck. Um, yeah. And they have a copy of uh what you had written. Um, so I don't know if you wanted to give us a quick, quick overview of all of that. And we kind of got it set up in a series of
That way we can, yeah.
There's donations, we can accept donations, consider a vehicle purchase, and then consider um reserve fund appropriations.
Is that why we're skipping this?
Yes.
So we're here.
So we're right here right now.
So John. Introduce yourself, sir. So I'm Fred Brewer. I'm
Thank you.
The trustees for the fire company. Um since about July or August, we've been exploring replacement of the Durango that John drives. Um, so we've been looking used, new. Um, it it's a pretty tough market to buy anything used that is decent. So we were looking somewhere in the, you know, thirty to fifty thousand dollar range. Um, so John reached out to Chief Warlock and uh and he put us in contact with Leo of Quirk. And uh, so they had a twenty twenty two um vehicle that's similar to what the PD has. Um, and it, the price is thirty six, one thirty seven. Um, as an engine company, we met on Monday and um unanimously decided that this is the direction we wanted to go in. Um, we feel that it's gonna suit the town's needs for now and um hopefully seven to ten years. Um, we bought used before and got about seven years out of them. So um buying new, hopefully we pick up a warranty. Um, and we also pick up the um the length of time that we can utilize the vehicle. Um so we've kind of asked the board to um facilitate the purchase of this vehicle because they're only allowed to sell it to municipalities. So as a nonprofit organization, we aren't allowed to purchase it directly. So we've, I've got a check here if the board decides to uh um move forward with this. Um, give the check tonight. Um, it is on the warrant um for tonight to uh to essentially flow the money through the town, purchase the vehicle. Um but it's it's a town owns a vehicle. It'll be insured by the town. Um it essentially is no different than it is now with the current vehicle. It's just we end up with a new one. Um, so going through the, do you want to go through the list, Andy, or?
Um, so I've highlighted, if you want to, you can. I've highlighted those as draft motions, uh, very similar to how you had those there. Maybe not quite in the same order, but if you wanted to highlight those for him, you can.
Okay, so.
Question. Is John sat in the the driver's seat?
Of it? No.
Because of the headroom and the foot room in the front look like it's not big enough.
Really? See, it cause I was
Kidding, in a sense, but the first thing I ever did when I buy a car is sit in it.
Yep. Um, I was actually at a town office today. We're doing the audit. So I told them what we were doing and uh they're in the process. They just purchased one back in it was six to eight months before they got the vehicle. So they got it in, I think, August. And uh, they're in the process of purchasing another one. And they found a company in Florida that is selling twenty twenty twos. So I was like, well, what price did you get? Well, it was like I think four hundred dollars more than what we're paying for this. And they also have to pay the freight to get it up here. So at the end of the day, it's about forty thousand dollars for the same vehicle.
Yeah.
So he goes, you guys got a pretty good deal. So I mean, I
Yeah.
And I mean, I said in the in the letter that it was about eleven thousand dollars difference in price between a twenty twenty two and a twenty three. And that's why they explored going down to Florida to get this vehicle because it was still cheaper than buying a twenty three.
Yeah. Yeah. So we need to, the board needs to accept the donation from our department first.
I make a motion, we accept the donation from the fire department.
You want the amount?
Thirty six thousand.
One hundred and thirty seven dollars.
Hundred and thirty seven dollars.
All right. I'll second. Um, any discussion? All those in favor? And we got one abstained. So. All right, that's it. We earned. Right. We're done for the evening? Okay, and now I think we need to make motion for the town to spend the same amount to purchase a, how do you want to word it, Andy?
Uh, so I I have it in there. And there's a copy of the sales quote in there in your packet as well, um outlining all of the number at the bottom line that uh Fred had presented. Um, in case anyone wanted to see any more details, it literally is a police responder vehicle. And I think I, you're identical to literally what we have downstairs.
Yeah, it's black. So, yeah.
Um, so the, I drafted it. Um, should the board uh want to consider it? Um on motion to, so I think we need to capture that, you know, we're gonna have this go into the fire truck reserve. And so then the motion uh to consider to appropriate up to, and I think I had a higher amount. Um
Thirty six.
One thirty seven.
Thirty six, one thirty seven on that.
Yep.
You have it on a different.
I see thirty six, one thirty seven.
They're just adding it. Okay. Now, so if you wanted to consider appropriating that amount from your fire truck reserve uh for the purpose of purchasing, equipping, and putting into service a fire truck that replaces, you call it car one, right?
Oh, go ahead.
Yes, yeah.
Chief's car.
Chief's car.
Do you, did you move?
I moved.
Is that, you 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 said it.
That's how I had drafted it.
All right. Lou's gonna move it. Did you get the, do we, is the motion clear enough from?
I think so, yeah.
You said it. Lou's gonna move it for you.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right. And Tom's seconding. Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor? Two, three, four. And we've got Josh is gonna abstain. He's he's too close to the source over there.
Yeah, I did win my shirt tonight.
Okay.
So in the, in the series of um approving this purchase, one of the things that we, the board would have to be willing to consider is to purchase this vehicle as presented, uh, the board would have to waive uh the bid policy. Um, and so I had drafted a motion, uh, if so desired uh, to waive the bid policy in the interest of uh completing these, oh, sorry, that's for the repairs. Um uh, back under two, to waive the town's bid policy to authorize the um, so the fire chief, believe John, you're able to go get that. Um, to authorize the fire chief to purchase a vehicle on behalf of the town.
Make a motion.
Again, the, just to be clear, the the request to to consider waiving this bid policy we have is just they've done some some due diligence on looking at different prices from different dealers. Um, and it looks like they've done what they can. Uh, kind of not taking advantage of the situation would only cost us more money. Um, and so typically, we know like a policy that would ask us to go out to see, you know, kind of more of a formal bid process. But I think this is the most expeditious way and uh, most fiscally responsible way of dealing with this at the moment.
Yeah.
Done their due diligence. So, yeah.
That's just coming up.
We're getting to that.
Oh, yeah, this is a multiple step. Yeah.
So, um, we heard a a motion um to waive the bid policy. Lou, did you?
I make a motion, we waive the bid policy.
Second.
Um that complete the motion? Do you want to have a, what we're waiving it for?
Well, we're waiving it for the
Yeah.
Truck, oh.
To purchase a
Purchase.
Yeah, authorize the town manager to purchase a
Yeah.
Chief, fire chief vehicle or the fire chief.
Manager, fire chief to purchase a vehicle on behalf of the town.
All right, there we go. All right. So Lou in motion, Tom seconds. Any discussion? All those in favor? Or Josh is out? All right.
And that, and that we've got appropriate.
Grateful thanks for the engine company for helping make that happen.
Yes.
Yeah. We spent a lot of time trying to figure out what move to make. And then this just kind of fell into place. So we weren't setting out to replace it immediately, but this was too good to pass up. So it's great to have the support of the engine company.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah. It's nice to be able to have the money to do it. So.
Yeah.
Most we have left on that one. And do we have to do a?
Uh, for that purchase, uh, that kind of summarizes and closes the the purchase of that vehicle. Um, the next item we had was related, unrelated to that vehicle, um, or the current chief's car. We have uh something John made, uh, our fire chief, John, made me aware of the other day was that there's some
Repair.
There's some repairs needed uh for um one of the fire engines. Um, in your packet, there was a overview of the repairs from a company uh that the department uses um to do some of the service work. So I'm gonna let John explain a little bit more.
Fred out and John come back up. You don't have to introduce yourself again.
Okay. So I'm here in the fire department capacity now. Um we had a a structure fire on uh Jackie's Trail um few weeks ago, middle of the night. And uh when we went to take the truck back out of uh pump, it uh didn't want to come back at a pump. So we had to tinker with it a little bit, finally get it back to where it would drive. Uh, so we took it up to Reliance to take a look, thinking that, you know, maybe something just need to get greased. And it turns out that the whole um fork and yoke assembly that transfers the transmission power from the wheels to the pump uh, is uh not made anymore and is made in a completely different uh, is uh, not made anymore and is made in a completely different manner.
Nice.
Um, so instead of just replacing a simple part, uh, they've gotta replace pretty much the whole assembly. Um, and so they've outlined the work and what they estimate the cost to be uh, in there. And uh, as we budget for only nine thousand dollars of repairs total in a year, and this could amount to eleven thousand, we're asking that um, the fire truck reserve account be used to uh, make these repairs. And if we have leftover at the end of the year, then um, we'll recommend transferring whatever's left in our budget back into the reserve to make up whatever difference we can. But uh, again, Reliance services our pumps, they do our pump test every year, they're familiar with all our trucks. Um, and I would rather have them do this than um, any other people in the area, cause we've had much better luck with Reliance than um, some of the other um, people working on fire trucks. Well, put it nicely.
You've had experience with them, so, okay.
So there'd be a, a two-part, um, we could probably, I won't say debate, but um, whether or not this would require a waiver of the bid policy or not, but I think this was a kind of an un- budgeted, if you will, just the amount, we didn't have that amount in there, so. Um, the way I've drafted the motion was to waive the bid policy in the interest of uh, completing these repairs in an expeditious manner and to appropriate up to twelve thousand five hundred dollars for major repairs as presented uh, by Reliance Equipment. In case there's, there's a, there was a asterisk in there about some extra, extra costs that might be incurred, so hopefully that's enough of a.
Yeah, we're gonna get up to twelve-five for that repair, so, yeah. Um, yes, fair enough, I'll make a motion to uh, waive the bid policy in the interest of completing these repairs in an expeditious manner and to appropriate up to twelve, uh, twelve thousand five hundred dollars for major repairs as presented by Reliance Equipment.
Second.
Andrew, seconds, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, now we need your.
No, thank you.
Your trucks to work.
The truck's been out of service since that happened, cause.
Has it been, yeah.
Um, we, so uh, the repairs should start Monday and it should be out for about a week.
Gotcha, gotcha, yeah. Oh, thank you, um, yeah, we don't need you up here for this next one, I think, we just go down through, all right, we get back on track here, um. Or forget, uh, let's move while we can, uh, we still have uh, accounts payable forty, which the reason we didn't move that because it had a uh, the check was drafted in there, so until we approved it, uh, uh, the actual payment, we didn't wanna move the uh, accounts payable warrant, so, by your motion for uh, accounts payable forty.
I make a motion, we approve accounts bill number forty.
Lou, second?
Second.
Tom, thank you, any discussion? All those in favor? Or, and abstain? I was trying to keep it on a roll, Josh, so, yeah, we got one more here. All right, so um, surplus equipment, so this is.
I get another one here.
Yeah, we get another one, uh, so now we have to talk about the uh, the Durango, right? And uh, yeah, it's just uh.
There's um, two items under the surplus equipment, the first is the, the Durango or the fire chief's uh, vehicle that we've talked about replacing. Um, and we don't have a, a date, you know, lined yet, but um, there's, there's some work that has to happen with the new truck that comes in to get it fit for service, um, but um, you know, should that happen before March first by chance, um, if you just wanted to authorize the fire chief to solicit sealed bids uh, for that vehicle, um, you know, once, once again, the other vehicles in service, that would give him the chance to do that, and at a, at a future meeting, the board could entertain those and consider approving one of those offers.
Sounds good, um, I'll make a motion, authorize the fire chief to solicit sealed bids for the Dodge Durango uh, car one, uh, once car one is replaced and in service.
Second.
Andrew, second?
Sure.
Yeah, all right, any discussion?
I'm gonna object, no, we should keep the vehicle, we should keep that equipment in case we need it, we could use it for repairs.
You think that's financially sound?
I don't know, but we should really take and look into that first.
We're terrible actors, I'm sorry, sorry, but, sorry. Well, it might incur extra cost to the town, it breaks down, how we.
Use it for a taxi service.
Taxi service, oh, yep. I'm trying to come up with something for you guys, but uh, oh, thank you.
I'll bring something up.
So we still have the motion, we, we've. All those in favor? Stand out of it, all right. Lou, sorry, yeah, I convinced you, all right, great, great. Um, next, under surplus equipment, uh, we have some uh, what's, surplus service weapons?
You might, yeah, you might recall, uh, oh, maybe two months ago, uh, Chief Warlock was here talking about upgrading some of the um, the service weapons for the police officers, um, he had found an opportunity um, that would be kind of like trading in the current ones uh, for a certain amount, and I think at the end of the day, you know, something that we could make happen within the budget we have, um, and was to upgrade the weapons, uh, ammo that would be consistent with what some officers were using, um, and I believe in the long run, some of the ammo was cheaper than what we were currently using, so. Um, he's asking for the board to consider allowing uh, the officers to purchase those service weapons that they had, um, at the same price that was valued for the trade-in.
Fair enough, I'll make a motion to allow the officers to purchase their old service weapons at a value not less than the quoted trade-in value.
Second.
Thank you, Tom, any discussion? You wanna argue? All those in favor? All right, you, Josh voting this time, all right, yeah, no conflict animus there, so. All right. And we say, Andrew, we're gonna uh, main service center coalition appointments?
I have one question before we go on, though. Do the scouts understand why Josh has not voted?
It's a good question, thank you.
Huh?
Nope.
This is, this is Josh.
I, I am a, an assistant fire chief on the fire department, which is the Massa Soid Engine Company, so anything that's like budgetary, uh, any decisions that made. Some people say I can vote, some people say I can't, but I've always said no, so.
You'll hear uh, conflict of interest, the terms, conflict of interest, and it can be gray sometimes, but it's gonna be very clear cut, but sometimes you err on the side of caution with conflict of interest, so, yeah, so. He's just, he's neutral party.
Stay out of it, and the only time I ever talk about anything fire department related is that I get up out of this chair and I go and sit in that one.
Oh, well, you're wearing the shirt.
But I'm wearing the shirt, but it's, it's my little subliminal message that, hey, you probably ought to vote.
Maybe not the hat, but the shirt anyway, so.
Yeah.
Thank you, Lou, for bringing that out, so, yeah. Uh, right, where were we here, uh, main service center coalition appointments, um. I'll make a motion to uh, appoint uh, Andrew doors here tonight. If he wants to, uh, as our representative to the uh, main service, uh, uh, main service center coalition. And um. Do we have an alternate for that?
Lou? I think Lou was, so this was taken up when I joined as the town manager, just to acknowledge uh, for their sake that I was there on your behalf.
Yeah.
Um, they, they were on a calendar year, um, so I know some of our appointments or most of our appointments are on our fiscal year, but in this case, this organization's calendar year and it's come up. So.
Yeah.
Um, I believe Lou.
Okay, and, and I'll add, and Lou Abatoni as the alternate, so.
I'll second, if it hasn't been seconded.
No, I haven't heard a second yet, so, thank you, Josh, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, motion carries. Um, Andrew, I'll let you, you've got some, some information on the planning services contract and.
Uh, sorry, yeah, it's a little gen, it's a little general, um, so I've been working with, as you know, um, uh, Isabel had uh, supplied, you know, provided us with her resignation, um, a few weeks ago. Um, so I've been trying to work to find uh, an interim solution to get us through the rest of this fiscal year. Uh, while Sarah and I, uh, Sarah from New, the town manager Newcastle, uh, can talk about, you know, how we wanna proceed into the next fiscal year and do we wanna look for another employee that we can share, um, and, and, or if we wanted to try something different, so. In the interest in trying to keep things moving forward, you know, if we've got permits coming in for the planning board to consider, we need someone to put those together and.
Yeah.
Um, so I have a, a good lead on a couple different uh, services that we could entertain, um, and so I don't have those contracts you know, finalized yet or draft, you know, final drafts of those yet, but um, given that we need to, I need to put something into motion sooner rather than later. Um, I didn't know if the board would be comfortable allowing me um, to work within the parameters um, of what we have left in the budget for this year, uh, to sign contracts as we need for the, um, to continue these planning services.
And so there's about seventeen thousand, is that what's in the?
That's what I'm estimating, we will have unspent, um, you know, mostly from the full-time planner, um, that we were invested in fifty percent of, um, with Newcastle's the other fifty percent, but yeah, we, I'm estimating about seventeen thousand dollars that we'll be able to utilize within our budget from this year and um, I think I've got it figured out based on two different um, consultant services right now that we could get the hours we need to um, continue carrying the comp plan work as well as um, the site plan review and planning board prep, and then there's some ordinance work that's been on the radar of the planning board to revise, um, the hope was, I think, to bring it forward for town meeting, but we might not have, we're not gonna have that drafted and ready by um, in the public hearings before second week in April, um, so we have to have that warrant set by April, um, to be able to get it printed in time for the town meeting.
I'm assuming Isabel's not one of the potential contracts.
Uh, she has provided me with the proposal, so it's one I'm considering, um, you know, she was very involved in the comp plan work and.
Well, six, one and a half and Doug's in the other, I would recommend continuing with her. I mean, it's a known quantity, she's already got her feet in it, who's leading us.
Yeah.
You wanna move a motion for them to continue with contracts?
Yeah, so uh, I'll make a motion that we allow town manager enter into planning service contracts, allow the town's planning service to be met through the end of the fiscal year.
Second.
Thank you, Tom, thank you, Lou, any discussion?
Yep. I'm all set with uh, services for site plan review and the planning board, assisting the planning board, but uh, as far as moving forward with uh, doing the comp plan, I would like to see if we could find in different individual or try to do our own in-house type of service. Because the.
I think that's open for debate. Yeah, that's why I'm here.
Well, I, being a former life scout, I want these guys to get their merit badge.
Yeah.
Well, I've got something else to add on later down.
All right.
Um, but I, I, I just think, you know, I, as much as Isabel was here and was our shared employee, um, she decided to go in a different direction.
Well, just be careful about how we wanna talk about personnel stuff.
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying as a consultant, in moving forward, I, you know, I'd, I'd like to see if we could find some other avenues.
So right now, the, the, the motion on the table right now is not to, for us to approve.
Right.
MCAG or IOV consulting, it's uh, the motion on the table is to allow um, the town manager to um, plan and fill those contracts, so we're not, we're not moving that, we're not suggesting looking at.
Other, I'm just looking at the, as the two proposals on here is what, just, is what I'm looking at is the options.
So, so we're, yeah, so our motions aren't directing anybody to do any direct, uh, you know.
Unless modified, yes.
Yeah, right, yes. So, and I, I guess the MACAG deal is that, that's something that they can assist us with anyway, for the planning board?
For the planning board, yeah, that's the um, the group I'm seeing most fit and ready and able to go forward to, so, like, I know, you know, you know, there's most likely gonna be, um, I mean, for March still, there's still time for permits to come in or applications to come in for the March meeting, and so Isabel's last week being next week. Um, I wanna make sure we've got something lined up, should there be permits that need to be put together or applications that need to be fleshed out for the planning board and prepared, so. I'll probably look to move, uh, you know, in that direction by the end of the week or early next week, um, for that service.
And it, and I know you've talked about uh, working with Newcastle more on the shared planner, but are, are we going to uh, put this out um, to look for a new planner before, you know, in a week or two, or a shared planner?
We, uh, Sarah and I need to figure that out, I mean, I wanna make sure one of my, um, in my mind was, you know, we got the rest of this fiscal year, I do not wanna see the, the work that's been happening with the comp plan derailed or, or stop, put aside for three, four, five, six months, however long it would take to fill, it took quite a while last time, but to fill a planner's position that would then pick up, learn where we're at, maybe come up with a new process, you know, so I could see that comp plan being delayed six to eight months potentially. Um, depending on how, you know, how the next person would come in, whenever that would be, or next consultant would come in. Um, so that's been in my, you know, trying to figure out how do we proceed and keep that committee moving forward, so it doesn't turn into a five-year process.
Yeah.
Um, and so I, you know.
Back over again.
Let's hope not.
So we still have a motion on the table, um, is there any more discussion?
I'm, I'm just asking, it's not just limited to the two.
Yep.
There's gonna be some other.
I will take.
Looking at other avenues.
Yeah, I'll look at, um, you know, others that we could work with on the short notice, um, to be able to help help us continue as mu, as quick as we can, um, you know, cost will be a factor in deciding. Um, you know, cause we have a limited budget to work with this fiscal year still, and what's left for this fiscal year.
Right.
Um, and so, yeah, I'll, I'll look at, you know, multiple options before signing something, but still trying to keep it again with what we have available here. I'm assuming the boards, you know, so, would we be, the board be in support of, uh, trying to find a a way to keep that moving forward, that process moving forward as seamless as possible, or um, you know, open and okay with a delay and kind of pausing the process for a little while.
As long as we stay within the budget.
To keep it, keep it going, you know, yeah.
Okay.
Um, and what's gonna become of a purchase that, was it? Web, web service or something for?
It's, it's built active, the, the, there's a survey available on that platform that we've, the social pinpoint, it was called. Um, so our comp plan has a website built out, and she did do that, the survey's up if folks wanna take the survey on thinking about the town's, you know, next ten, fifteen-year vision, and that's available now and will be available, I think, into the summer. Um, so if anyone's looking to see what that looks like at the moment, it's there, we paid for it for a year.
And we have someone on the board that's able to maintain it.
Good.
Do we?
Oh, sorry, I don't know if that's a question or statement. Um, I don't know, um, you know, I think that was kind of the point of having a, a employee, um, kinda help, a staff person help with this process, is that the staff person probably is expected to do most of that, I, I can ask if there is um, kind of a contingency built in, if you will, for volunteers on the committee to have learned that.
All right. Um, well, we'll call for a vote on uh, Tom's motion to authorize a town manager enter into planning service contracts. Uh, all those in favor? All right, uh, opposed? Andrew, abstaining?
I'm no.
You're gonna abstain, okay. Well, no, wanna abstain, three, yes. All right, so that motion carries.
I gave him a little bit.
Uh, all right, um, we have a couple of uh, foreclosure waivers, these all seem pretty straightforward, anybody have any? Need any background from uh, Andrew on that? All right, so we can move these through, uh. I'll make a motion to waive uh, foreclosure of the tax lien mortgage recorded in the Lincoln County Register of Deeds in book fifty-seven sixty, page ninety-five.
Second.
Thank you, Tom, any discussion? All those in favor? All right, two, three, everybody here is there, okay, and well, I'll be on a roll here, I'll make a motion to waive uh, foreclosure of the tax lien mortgage recorded in the Lincoln County Register of Deeds in book uh, fifty-seven sixty, page one hundred.
Second.
Yeah, thank you, Lou. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, motion carries, all right. Uh, let's see, we get all the regular motions there done. Okay, so before we um, I'll, I'll talk, we'll talk to the scouts here for a minute, tell what, what's gonna happen next, cause we're gonna clear the room here in a minute, so.
Well, I, I thought we could do select, select board discussion items.
We can, yeah, we'll do those first, yeah, yeah. Yeah, might as well, so we'll start with Josh down here, he brought it up.
I've got a couple items.
Yeah.
Um, since the state has been so generous lately, um, when does, when is the date that um, towns get reimbursed their money for the, this tax program for the senior residents?
The um, the bill that passed last year on the tax sta, the stabilization.
Yes.
Yeah.
Um, I don't have an answer for when the town would get its money.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if they ever set. Yeah, I'm just wondering if they ever set a date.
Good question.
Um, because I know our community is of, uh, taxpayers are, a lot of our holders are a little bit older and qualified for these programs. So I'm just trying to make sure that we don't, as the town, find ourselves in a little bit of a hole.
Carrying that balance for.
Carrying that balance for quite a while.
Right. That is certainly a question some of the towns have. Um, there was a, I think, I believe a month identified that they would do the reimbursement by. I think for towns like us on fiscal year, July to June, I think it was going to fall within that current fiscal year, but I think towns on a calendar year, we're possibly going to see it the next fiscal year. Um, there's still a lot of question about how it's really going to work. Um, and so I think there's, there's some bills, uh, in, uh, legislature this session to, I think there's at least three, if not four, um, that kind of bring up, uh, make some changes. There's, uh, um, I believe one that asks for no, you, you wouldn't have to submit uh, an application each year. And right now it asks that you submit one every year. Um, so like Homestead, you just do the one and unless you move or sell your property, it stays with you. Um, and so the another one that's, uh, been proposed is to eliminate, um, or, or, um, so eliminate that stabilization program and, uh, improve the, increase the homestead exemption for folks over sixty-five, I believe it is. Um, and so there's not two of, I think, three or four, um, the legislature's got in front of them this year in this session. Um, so I think there's still some uncertainty as to what'll come forward. Um, I know the assessors mentioned it today while they were in and I know our, the firm we use, uh, also works with, I think, sixty or seventy other towns in the state. Um, you know, and even they are kind of scratching their heads about, you know, just exactly how this is supposed to be working. So.
So they put, basically they put a program in place that didn't have any guidelines to follow.
Right. And there's a.
Unusual.
Back to that.
It, it was, right. And so it was, it was put out there by the legislature and then the state had to kind of create the program. Um, the funding, uh, for it, uh, is being planned right now and then, and for the next state budget, um, the state does a two-year budget. And so, um, there's estimates right now for what that impact's going to be to the state. The state's still saying, um, and asking for a hundred percent of that, uh, freeze or that stabilization to come back to the towns. You know, whereas the homestead program, uh, the taxpayers bear some of that percentage. Um, and I think there's even a bill to increase that number. Um, so we'd get more back from the state on that. Um, so there's a lot of moving pieces with that particular program still, um, but it is written, it is in place. And then there's just a lot of questions on like, you know, when exactly we get the money and, um, you know, because it's, it's something that'll show up as, uh, not another to be collected, you know, at least homestead exemption, some of it's collected and the state does reimburse, I believe, on a mo- one, I think it's a monthly basis for the homestead, um, I think. Um, so, yeah, we'll have to keep asking those questions.
Yeah. Keep pushing them. Yeah.
No. And our roads are posted as of Friday.
We put the signs up Friday. It was actually, uh, written to be effective Sunday. Um, so it was to kind of get folks a heads up. I did put it in the newsletter that I think that when I sent out Friday night.
Yes, you did.
Um, we coordinated, um, Seth, uh, as the, uh, road commissioner in Newcastle, actually coordinated with Noble Borough, Jefferson, us, Newcastle. So, um, we all kind of went up at the same time. Um, Bristol, I believe, is up as well.
Yeah. Bremen was today.
Yeah.
Um, moving forward from that, how are we going to work on our roads if our roads are posted?
Um, work in what way? On which roads exactly?
Like Miles, Egypt, Belvedere.
Yeah.
How do, how do you do that?
So, um, as far as the road posting goes, we didn't post Miles Road because the work is going to be going on. Um, and then, and they have big trucks that need to get in and out of there anyways. Um, so it didn't seem practical with the work we're planning to do and they're going to start working on it March first. So, um, and then Egypt and Belvedere, they plan on working on Mile Street and not doing a lot of work on those roads for now. They want it to dry out and stop moving. Um, and so it, grateful we got those culverts in before winter. And so it does, you know, with the activity we're, we're having with this weather, it gives it a real good chance to kind of work out what it needs to work out hopefully. And and it'll provide for a better surface afterwards. It was considered.
Just want to make sure we're not going to start work on.
Right.
Setting a precedent.
Yeah.
Every, nobody else can go over it, but we can.
Right.
Right.
And there are some allowances depending on the weather of that day. I mean, if, if.
Right.
You know, if the, you know, we've posted them, but if the temperature's below, I believe thirty-two, and there's no, uh, water in the cracks of the pay, of the asphalt roads, you're able to drive your trucks on there as you did, as you were, um, on gravel roads, which we don't. We have any town gravel roads right now, but there are some.
Maybe.
Not yet. Um, I'm still waiting on, I have that in my update, but while you mentioned it, I'm still waiting for, there's that piece of property adjacent to ours. That's like fifty by two hundred feet. And I've reached out to, I think, four different, um, people who were possibly connected to this, um, at different organizations or different, um, LLCs or companies. And, um, I've gotten through initially and no calls back.
We'll section.
Um, so I have actually asked our assessor to put it in our, um, assessing database because it actually didn't have a tax map and wasn't getting a tax bill. Um, it may or may not have been a justified reason for that years ago, but we've actually created one, um, so we can send it. And if, and if it takes three more years, at least then we could do that process if we have to, but.
Take three more years.
My hope, I mean, I, I guess at some point I'm going to have to basically go drive down to the address of the owner of the, the party that's in charge of this prop- property. Um, and just ask, I have asked, uh, Highly West if he could help me identify who it might be because I think they were involved in some of the old land that transferred at some point. Um, he did give me contact, but they haven't called back. So.
Yeah.
I'm still working on that.
Yeah. Some slow, slow process, some time. So.
I'm good for.
Thank you, Josh. You got it. You also. Andrea.
Wait a minute. What are we going to do with, for the debate?
Oh, we kind of. We've had a few. Yeah, we're doing pretty good. Yeah.
You want more debate?
They're supposed to debate it, aren't they? No. All right.
Andrew, any discussion items this evening?
So I have a complaint about Hager.
Well.
You're going to take it, Andy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've.
But it's, oh.
Well, it depends on what you complain. If it's a personnel issue or with a contract or something like that, we've got to be careful.
Well, just complaining about the speed that they drive their vehicles. That's something I should bring up with you. Things I've seen.
Better brought up with, um, the police chief.
Yeah.
Speed is, I can't enforce.
Yeah, that's nothing to do with, yeah. Yeah. So.
Okay, fine. I'll discuss it with him.
All right.
Lou? I, I just want to thank the scouts for coming. I hope you keep an interest in municipal, state and federal government. You get to an age when you will be voting on some of the things that have happened here tonight. So please continue in that vein.
Well said, Lou. Thank you. Tom?
Amen.
That's it. I'll, I'll keep it short and brief here. So, uh, on the, the, the technical aspect, so what we're going to do next for the scouts, um, there's, uh, government's supposed to be very transparent and there's very few things that we can, uh, uh, do behind closed doors. Um, they have to be very specific things. Um, so we're going to move into what we call executive session. Um, and there's, uh, uh, under, you know, state law, there's, there's some guidelines for that. So we can't just do it whenever we want to, if we want to talk about something. So, um, typically it's with, uh, personnel matter, discussing contracts or things like that. So, so what will happen next? Uh, and I, I think I might have mentioned some of that the night I was there, but what we, we can and cannot do. So, so we're going to, um, uh, we're going to, uh, uh, make a motion to move into an executive session. And then we basically, everybody kind of has to. We don't want to kick you out. But, but you can't stay here. Yeah. Which means the cameras, everything, nothing gets recorded. And oftentimes what happens, well, if we come out of executive session, we, there may be a motion after that. Um, and we'll usually convey that and he might take the, the minutes. So the town manager may take the minutes because at that point we won't have cameras or, you know, I don't think, uh, hang out in the hallway. A leader of course probably not hanging out in the hallway. So, uh, but I like to, yeah, to second Lou. Um, it was, it's for everybody coming and especially for the scouts here tonight. I hope, uh, you know, yeah, maybe you learned a little bit and it's, it's, uh, it's an interesting process. And yeah, when you get to that voting age, yeah, absolutely. Keep it up. So.
So how many of you want to be Eagle Scouts? Raise your hand.
Yeah. Hands up. Yeah. All of them unanimous. One, two, three. Yeah.
All right.
Awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah. Keep it up, gentlemen. So, thank you. All right. Uh, yeah, yeah. I'll allow it. Yeah. Um, you got to come up here. We've got one more comment before we go to executive session.
I'm putting on a different hat now. So since about two thousand seventeen, I've been working on a, a state program for, they call it LOSAB. So it's the length of service award program. So in your warrant today, there should be about fourteen thousand dollars. That's part of the appropriation from the town for the last two years. So this is kind of the, the beginning of this program because that's the first money that's going into this program at the state level. Um, we have basically, I've been working, um, as part of the board. Um, so we've been over the last year doing, uh, um, setting up the actual retirement print plan. We've been meeting regularly with, uh, AIG, Corbridge, whatever their Valek, that, that's the company that we're working with. And we're to the point now where we've done our beta testing and now the money that's going in is going to go into the, um, participants' accounts. So we'll be the first town to actually put money in the program.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've been involved. You've been working on it a long time.
Yeah, I have.
Yeah.
It's been a lot of work.
Yeah.
I, I think in the long run, it's going to be worth it. You can get to, it's a reward program for people's volunteer service.
Yeah.
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 Right.
Awesome. It's hard to get volunteers. So, yeah. No, thank you for that addition.
You guys are part of history. So.
Thank you.
You don't look too tired yet.
All right. Well, with that, um, I'll make a motion pursuant to MRSA four oh five six, uh, for personal matter. What's that?
Six A.
Six A.
Oh, I missed the A. Sorry. Six A, uh, for discuss a personal matter.
Second.
Uh, Lou's seconds. All right. We'll give everybody a minute. So thank you for coming.
Thank you guys for coming.